Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. You need to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand's, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, at 5 o'clock, we actually had our special meeting. We had our candidate interviews and our new, well, not yet newest because she's still got to get sworn in and she's got some stuff she's got to take care of up at Fort Graship, but Georgia Baldwin will be the new Commissioner, I think that's District 2, right? District 2 replacing Carl Tunnell, so welcome addition. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatham?
Here.
Item 3 additions, the license changes to the agenda.
I would move that we add Emergency Management Coordinator Information Form, Item A to, where do we want to put it?
New business, right?
I don't know. I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed to approval of the agenda?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? I'm going to do a 4A here. I'm going to let Mayor Damon see if he can work. Keep it to 10 minutes around the floor.
I've got a clock right in front of me, so it's set to bar time, so we'll see what happens. Now, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank the County Commission for kicking off its summer tour here in the city of Marysville as is only right from my perspective. Marysville likes to be on the forefront of just about anything we can and to have the County Commission come down and have its presence known and have its first summer tour meeting here, just want to let you know that we appreciate that. From the entirety of Marysville City Councils and Marysville City Administration, Commissioner Baldwin, I would like to say congratulations on your appointment. I know you will be missed sorely in the Township of Fort Graship. I know you have served that community extraordinarily well. I think that the County Board of Commissioners was in a great position in having such great candidates that would faithfully fill that office, and I think they made a very wise choice to such a dedicated official as yourself. So, I look forward to seeing what you can do with this County Board of Commissioners. And lastly, while you are all here in town, I would hope that you would swing by the Marysville Park and check out the train just to ensure that you see it. It has just been redone. It's something the train is, the train is something we are very much proud of, and just last year, we had an Eagle Scout completely redo all of that, so I encourage you to swing by and check that out before you leave, along with all of the other renovations of our park.
Reductions here.
Yeah, I guess I could do that. And so, seat immediately to my left, we have our Mayor pro temp Kathy Hayman. To her left, we have Councilmember David Barber, and to his left, we have Councilmember Paul Wessel.
Thanks for having us on here. Item 5, Minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to approve and file the Minutes of 5/16/19 Commission Meeting and 6/6/19 Standing Committee Meetings and the 6/13/19 Special Meeting.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item 6, there's no proclamations. Item 7, A through G on the consent agenda. Before we get into consent agenda, for those of you that haven't seen our meetings before, we had a meeting two weeks prior to this to discuss all these items. Our structure's a little different than cities a lot of times. We actually discuss the information, then we pass them on to our full board, so it seems like we're going through these things kind of quick. It's because these things have been talked about, sworn into. Consent agendas, Items A through G.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Items 7A through 7G in the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any? All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item 8, Port Standing and Special Committees. Greg, I'm going to start the meeting on that.
You know, there's, I don't have much tonight other than there is a meeting, a class that's going to be, and it's through Emergency Management in September, and it is for, it involves trains.
Are we talking about the bomb? That's a cluster.
Is it the one with the, about the gases that are carrying?
Oh, that's the chemical, yeah, you're talking about the chemical chlorine.
The chemical chlorine, but it has to do with trains. I didn't know if we had anybody on the board that would be interested or has any clue about what goes on in that industry.
I would think, just, I don't know if I'm not speaking out of turn here, but Dave is, worked for the railroad for a number of years to the point that he qualifies for pension, so he's been there a long time. And I saw that posting, Greg, and I think that we need to be fully aware of what is going on because of the chlorine, because of all those tankers that have come out of Marysville plant up there and some of that other stuff with what's going to happen there. This is a training program, you said?
Yes.
If you're available and you can... I will try to be. I'll give you an instance. When I was track supervisor for Grand Trump Western Railroad, I covered the area from Port Huron to Detroit to Pontiac down to Toledo, but when I was an assistant track supervisor down in Flat Rock, we actually had a chlorine car that ruptured right under I-75, and at that point, we had to shut down all of I-75. Conductor on that particular crew was on the ground, and that chlorine filled your ass and you did die.
We are looking for a student, a teacher for this class.
You're the chosen one, David. So, sound like a setup. Anything else?
Yeah, we'll have our details all tomorrow. I'll continue to listen. Yes.
Thank you. No, I mean, Justin's going to be talking. That was one of the others, so that's all I get to tell.
Okay.
Just great talk.
Just the same old, same old, guys. The water is continually coming up and it's spreading further north. You know, Clay and Elginak are the low-water areas. I talked to Marine City today, they are having some real issues with some of their places now. The water's continuing to rise. The city of Elginak just declared emergency today, and by that, what they're doing and what they want to do is if you, first off, everybody is supposed to take care of their own property. Protect your property, that's the number one thing for homeowners to do at this point. If, in Elginak, if you do not do that and water comes through your property and infiltrates to somebody else's property or public property, the city is going to tell you to firm it, bag it, do whatever you can to slow it down. If you don't do that, then they are going to come in and do it at your expense. So, everybody has to work together on this. Every time I drive down the road, I have certain things that I look at, and I can tell you, living down that way, that the water is slowly creeping up. I couldn't tell you in inches, but I can tell you that the guy's dock that was not underwater that's now underwater, I mean, I see this every single day. We had some real issues on Colony Drive. The Road Commission stepped up and plugged some drains, put in some pumps. Anchor Bay Drive is probably the worst area around there. We actually have lost that road now. It is crumbling and back to, which was a blacktop road about four years ago, they paved it all the way, and it's pretty much back to a, you know, a stone road at this particular point. We don't see an end in sight. Justin from the Emergency Services will tell you that it's going to continue to rise, and I believe that he talks to the Corps of Engineers probably every day, maybe twice a day sometimes, and there is no indication that it's going to stop at this point. Everything seemed to be to the point where everybody agreed that maybe all the water from the north was down, but the amount of rain that we've had, and I can tell you with the rain that we had today, and we're probably going to have them the next day or so, another two days, you're going to see another jump in that. It takes a couple of days for that runoff to actually get out there, but it's coming. I have talked to people everywhere. My son was over on Russell Island yesterday, which has no cars on it. It's made up of three islands, the South Island, the road is completely flooded for probably close to three quarters of a mile and around the corner. Anderson Island, which faces to the west, is pretty much underwater most of the way. Some people have shut off their power and left the island, said they'll come back when water goes back down. Things of that nature are happening. The Township of Clay is working with their fire chief and with their building inspector to the point that if water inundates your home and it's in an area that's considered livable, which could be even your garage, if you have water flowing in your house, they may come out and pour your electric meter so that there is no chance that you could hurt yourself or people around you. So, what I'm saying is it's getting worse and it's moved up. Like I said, Marine City's in a bad shape. I know East China has some bad spots, so everybody's facing it. You go back to the Port Huron and the Black River and back into some of those lower homes back in there, it's everywhere. So, I guess be patient, do what you can do, help your neighbors. Elginak has formed a group of people that are helping their neighbors down there, and they're doing everything they can to fill bags and whatever they can do. Other than that, Donny Cash says five miles or five feet high in rising, is that the song? It's, could be tough.
David? I went to a meeting down in Baltimore today, and one of the things I was brought up, of course, with flooding, but also was your ferry, and apparently you have a potential buyer that wants to purchase the ferry. I'm not sure if you are aware of all this.
Yep, Marine City.
Yes, and the ferry that goes to Canada, it was contingent on Customs being allowed to service and that hasn't gone through, but potentially in three or four weeks, that might go through and you'll have a buyer for the ferry and that service will start running again. One of the things that, on the Customs, I had heard, and if you remember, we went through it at the airport, we were going to move the Customs, because we have Customs out of the airport. We were going to move them from that small little office over to the other building, and the requirements that they require to go into the new facility, it was like half a million dollars or something crazy, you know? I had heard that they have some issues with being shut down there, that the Customs are ...
Correct.
I know I've talked with Kevin from Enger to Peters, I spoke with him on my phone, and I saw him when we were up there and talked about the issue. He's the ranking number on Homeland Security, so...
Mr. Chairman, he just finished his letter yesterday. He's sending it from the Emergency Services Group that he is head of, Homeland Security, which probably is the, he's the chair of that, so that probably carries just a tad more weight, and sending it off to CBP, and they are going to do their best to try to get that reopened. We've looked at a lot of different pieces of that, and Dave's spot on that they are looking at that. They do have a buyer, but it is contingent on getting that Customs Office reopened. That means they need six more employees that they don't have, that they will have to hire, and it also means some remodeling and some technical infrastructure in that existing building down there.
Duke?
Nothing on the committees, I'd just like to take a second and congratulate Georgia. I thought both candidates were very well qualified, and congratulations.
I've got a couple of things here. So, June 11th, myself and Commissioner Greatham, we went out to see Bill Dieter, our grand township, because obviously you were aware of the potential sale of the Silver Trails, so, because I hadn't been out there 40 years before, and met with a couple individuals, a couple of things that I found interesting that I never knew of was that the Boy Scouts already leased a very good piece of that property to the mining operations out there, and they have been mining that for 40 years, since then, last time I was out there, right? So, I mean, it's not, it's not a small operation either, so I was never aware of that, you know, I mean, if they had a, it's got to be half of the property that they're buying in very many ways. And really what it came down to, we talked with Bill Dieter, and I don't know what the, it's really a local issue because the county, you know, why don't you guys buy it for a park? Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? I didn't know about Silver Trails until the town, right, on Monday, so, you know, it's going on, but ultimately, that would come down to local decisions. I know you've had a really good working relationship with the Walsons out there and those types of things in the past, and they've always been a good corporate citizen and all that and stuff. I don't know if we have anything to...
Well, I mean, I probably have had 30 emails and 40 phone calls, and everybody wants to save Silver Trails, right? I mean, it's their childhood memories, it's, the problem is, Boy Scouts of America inherited that property in 2012, and they have control of it. And now that they have control of it, they've made an executive decision to sell that property and take the monies and use them at other locations to try to fix up things and do what they need to do. And you saw the condition of some of the buildings and everything. If we were to take it over as a county park, the price wouldn't be the big object. It would be bringing it up to all the requirements that are required when we get these DNI or trust warrants, and everything had to be made ADA accessible, and it would be a huge project. And when they continue to say they want to do it for the Boy Scouts, the Boy Scouts have already made a decision to pull out of that area, and I'm not talking the 10-year-old and the 12-year-old and the 14-year-old campers that are out there, I'm talking the Boy Scouts, you know, the main group. So, even if, if Grant Township so chooses to try to do something, if the deal would fall through and wanted to have a park out there, that would be, that would be one thing, but I think the maintenance costs would eat them up. But they're looking at it, they've got the, there's a thumb conservatory group that is, you know, talking about wanting to get things done, but then I asked them about how much money they had to throw into the pot, because he was asking how much money we had to throw, and I came, they had zero, so they just, they want to help spend somebody else's money, and it's all for a good cause, right? Everybody's got to build it for the right reasons, so, but there, again, it was a private sale, or it's hard for us to get in the middle of something like that, so, but Bill Dieter's very aware of what's going on, and I've been in contact with him, and if the property comes available for some reason, I'm sure that they're going to be right in line looking at doing something. And then if we, if they asked us for assistance, then we'll be there to facilitate or do what we can do.
And then I just want to say on the 14th, too, I know Commissioner Greatham and some of the others, we attended the PTM Open House in the southern part of the county, and they employ, they're the largest employer in the southern part, they employ roughly 300 people. They're celebrating, is that 1,000 tonne presses?
1,000 tonne.
Tonnes, I know they just made, I got presses like 8,000, I suppose I was mistaken, so it's just an eagles in to compete in a global market, so, pretty cool stuff, and Don is awesome to deal with, so. Going to move on. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, unfinished business. We're going to move into Items 11, new business, and like I said, if we go through this kind of quick, it's because we went through that previous meeting that has to go. Item A, approval of the county disbursements for May of 2019. This time, I'd like to move to approve county disbursements for May of 2019 in the amount
Support.
Discussion on any of those items? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item B, the paid time off policy.
I would move to forward to the regular July Board Meeting the recommendation to adopt policy 336, paid time off.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item C, the health department freezer purchase.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to approve the purchase of three vaccine freezer units in the amount of $10,128.57 from Helmer Scientific.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item D, the 2019 Port Security Grant Program application for the DIK.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Port Security Grant Program in the amount of $91,000 for the DIK.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item E, the 2019 Marine Safety Program Agreement.
This time, I'd like to move to approve fiscal year 2019 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $146,550.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item F, the Recovery Court Program and Grant Applications.
I would move to approve the adult drug DWI, high grit, and family dependency drug court certification, fiscal year 2020 Michigan Drug Court Program Grant Application, and the fiscal year 2020 Office of Highway Safety Plan and Grant Application in the combined amount of $123,907.12.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item 11G, Resolution 19-6, the Animal Control Fee Schedule.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to adopt Resolution 19-06, adopting a new fee schedule for dog license fees and remuneration of issuing and recording dog licenses.
Support.
Discussion. Did you want something to add there?
I want some questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? I'm going to get you some TV time off, though. You missed the last movie you brought. I pitched the landfill borough area street.
This time, I'd like to move to award an agreement for the final phase of the Clay Borough Area Development Project, Raymond Escating in the amount of $234,512.90.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item I, the Animal Control Manning Table Request for the Kennel Custodian.
Chairman Boe, I would move to approve the addition of a part-time kennel custodian to the Animal Control Manning Table.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item G, the Animal Control Manning Table Request for the Veterinary Technician.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the request to revise the veterinary technician from full-time or part-time to full-time in the Animal Control Manning Table.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Wolf, I mean, yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item K, the Employment Agreement with a Net Mercantile.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the employment agreement with a net merchant, MD, MPH, for a term of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, with an annual salary of
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item 11, Parking Lot Repair Project.
I would move to award a contract for parking lot repair to A and R Seal Coating in an amount not to exceed $37,768.90.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item M, the Emergency Management Coordinator Information Form.
Chairman, I move to approve the Emergency Management Coordinator Information Form.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Item 12, Administration Report.
So, earlier last week, myself and Jenny Posey, we met with Rich McKeegan and Gino, and we are beginning discussions with SMG on our contract renewal. Our current contract with them expires on March 30th of '20, which we still have quite a bit of time, but there are certain things in the contract that we are looking to address, mainly some of the performance metrics that were put in place prior to the convention center opening. I think now that we have been in operation for over four years, we have a better idea of the types of things we should be measuring and what's a fair metrics for both groups. So, we will be coming forward in the coming months with a contract proposal with a few minor revisions. At the retirement board meeting yesterday, the date was set for the annual action representation. That will be on July 16th at 9:30 AM in the Board of Commissioners' room, so we hope that certainly you can all attend that. Marine City District Port renovations are mostly complete. There are just a few punch list items left. Court staff would like to have a ribbon cutting for that to show off the new renovations that have been done down there, so we are hoping to have that sometime in July, so for an invitation for that. As you'll recall, last year, when we were looking for proposals for our inmate medical, Lake Huron only did a one-year contract with us, so that is currently out to bid. That bid closes on June 24th, so we will be evaluating that. Our current contract does expire in August, so we may need to do a few month-to-month extensions depending on how our bids come in and the time it takes to analyze those. Earlier this year, the state put together a panel to look at the acceptable levels for the PFAS and the PFOS, and this will impact our landfill. They are looking at the, it would impact our Lichate Pretreatment Plant that then goes to the city of Port Huron's wastewater treatment plant. So, we are currently going to be studying and testing to address what these potential requirements will be and how we are going to address them going forward. We do know that any testing and treatment of our Lichate is going to certainly come at a fairly significant expense. Our landfill director has been reviewing this ongoing. The legislation right now, tentatively, they say that they should have some recommendations on what the unacceptable parts per trillion should be by early next year, so we'll see what those recommendations are, but right now, we are already looking at and exploring options on what we will do to implement those changes. And kind of, that somewhat goes hand in hand with that. Earlier this week, we also received notice from the DPW that after December, they will no longer be running our Lichate Pretreatment Plant for us. The staff individual they have that does that work is actually retiring at the end of the year, so they're not confident that they can continue on with that contract because they won't have someone with the expertise to do it. So, our landfill director is also working on that and coming up with an alternate plan on how we will address that beginning in January. Just a quick reminder, your July schedule is not the first and third meeting due to the holidays. It will be on the second and fourth Thursday of July, and we are in St. Clair for our travel meeting in July. That's it.
Any questions for Carrie on the report at all?
Carrie, the DPW, the retirement, is that going to affect the outside testing that's done in Avoca and Emmett and...
I don't know. I know what in regards to our Lichate Pretreatment Plant, but I can follow up with that. I have not followed up with you on that.
Then I would just make the call.
Carrie, just a little bit more clarification on that. You said the DPW's not going to be doing that. What about the one in Elginak? Are they going to continue to run that one?
Yeah, this, this, our Lichate Pretreatment Plant is a little bit different, so the individual has this expertise to be able to handle our pretreatment plant at the landfill. I don't foresee any of the other operations changing. We haven't been notified of that, just the... just the contract with our landfill.
CTI, I'm sure, has the ability to do it, but it comes with a, as to, you know, they don't, they don't work cheap, so... One thing I would encourage, so if you get an opportunity to go to the actuarial report on the 16th, because that is what we base our decisions, you know, moving forward with the healthcare and some planning that, that we have to do, and I'm key word, Chairman, nine years ago, we had the old three to five years, and we were done, right? So we had to start making some, start those conversations with each other. We just, I think as the last report, there were roughly ninety-three percent on pension and fifteen, fifty-four on the healthcare side of things, so we've made some strides, you know, in the right direction to address those issues, but just stay on top of that thing. So if you can make that July 16th at 9:30, I would coach that. Anything else for Carrie? Motion for the Administrative Report.
So moved.
Support. On favor.
Aye.
Any miscellaneous business to come before us?